Hey, everyone. Give just a couple more minutes. Sorry, my video doesn't seem to be working, so I'm gonna restart really quick. All right. How's this, everybody? Does this work?
Yes, we can see you and we can hear you.
And there's no feedback, come on?
No, no feedback. And I was saying that when we go in a break, you can call me if you like, and I can diagnose your computer by remotely connecting to it.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. I know it's typically me complaining about technical issues, so this is some kind of karma. And I can't do that anymore. We'll catch up, though. So let's get going. All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 15, 2022 Virtual Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I am the Chairman of the ZBA. As an initial ZBA note, I want to highlight for everyone, especially those that regularly appear before the ZBA, to be on notice that more efficiencies are coming to the ZBA's application process. We'll be cleaning up a lot of the redundancy in the application process, which will help us hear more cases. So we appreciate your cooperation as we start to transition our forms. And now on with the meeting. First, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on June 24, 2022, the Governor of the State of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the State of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until July 24, 2022. Thus, Section 7E1 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I'm making a determination pursuant to Section 72 of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. I'm also making a determination pursuant to Section 75 that because of the disaster declared by the Governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the Zoning Board of Appeals or its chief administrative officer or its chief legal officer to be physically present at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no meeting placed. Third, the meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated first by my predecessor and now by me, which are posted to the board's website. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live stream. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual hearings in keeping with the Governor, the General Assembly, the Mayor, and City Council's goal to continue the government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the hearing. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those participating. Number one, we're operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you do not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will promote you as a panelist. Please accept this promotion. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, if you are here in opposition or support of a matter, when your matter is called, please raise your hand so that we know you are here and may transfer you to a panelist. If you're listening to this meeting via phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. Once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number six, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our records, so it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting someone if that occurs. Number seven, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that one time. If you're an active participant in the meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. Number eight, please make sure you identify yourself whenever you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this, as well as asking that each applicant spell out their name, which will be a new request. Number nine, if an applicant or anyone in opposition or support to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is thus unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve the issue. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Number 10, after your matter or matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting to ensure adequate capacity. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, I encourage you to watch the live stream, which is accessible from our website. Now, I'd like to call this Virtual Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. I will take a roll call to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can hear and see me. Commissioner Sanchez?
Present. I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Esposito?
Present. I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toya?
Present, and I can hear and see you.
Great. Quorum is established. The minutes of last month's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. They're approved as distributed. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The agenda is approved. Now, we're going to take continuances and withdrawals. We'll go down the list of matters that I have, and then we'll open the floor for any additional requests. Okay, so first up, I am going to call the attorney here on matter 61-21-S. So this is how we do this.
Let's see. Um, hey, go ahead, go ahead.
Hello?
We're here.
We're here. This is Nick Nant and Jenny Marsinkowski.
Yeah, I miss Marsinkowski. We're just waiting for the attorney as well.
Nick Fatikas on that as well.
Okay, so on this one, we've had some moving pieces this week and don't feel that the board has had ample time to review, really at no fault of anyone's in particular. But because of this, we're going to be continuing this matter for one month.
Chairman, when we're in a break, maybe you can call me and I can, I could try to diagnose your computer by remotely connecting to it.
All right, how's this everybody? Does this work?
Yes, we can see you and we can hear you.
And there's no feedback, come on?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
And I was saying that when we go in a break, you can call me if you like, and I can diagnose your computer by remotely connecting to it.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks everyone for your patience. I know it's typically me complaining about technical issues. So this is some kind of karma. And I can't do that anymore. We'll catch up though. So let's get going. All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 15th, 2022 Virtual Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I am the chairman of the ZBA. As an initial ZBA note, I want to highlight for everyone, especially those that regularly appear before the ZBA, to be on notice that more efficiencies are coming to the ZBA's application process. We'll be cleaning up a lot of the redundancy in the application process, which will help us hear more cases. So we appreciate your cooperation as we start to transition our forms. And now on with the meeting. First, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on June 24, 2022, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation, declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until July 24, 2022. Thus, Section 7E1 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I'm making a determination pursuant to Section 72 of the Open Meetings Act, that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. I'm also making a determination pursuant to Section 75, that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals, or its chief administrative officer, or its chief legal officer, to be physically present at the meeting place, inasmuch as there is no meeting placed. Third, the meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated first by my predecessor and now by me, which are posted to the board's website. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live stream. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, the mayor, and city council's goal to continue the government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the hearing. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those participating. Number one, we're operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will promote you as a panelist. Please accept this promotion. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, if you are here in opposition or support of a matter, when your matter is called, please raise your hands so that we know you are here and may transfer you to a panelist. If you're listening to this meeting via phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand. Once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number six, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our records. So it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting someone if that occurs. Number seven, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that one time. If you're an active participant in the meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. Number eight, please make sure you identify yourself whenever you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court orders cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this, as well as asking that each applicant spell out their name, which will be a new request. Number nine, if an applicant or anyone in opposition or support to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is thus unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve the issue. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Number 10, after your matter or matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting to ensure adequate capacity. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, I encourage you to watch the live stream, which is accessible from our website. Now, I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can hear and see me. Commissioner Sanchez?
Present, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Esposito?
Present, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toya?
Present, and I can hear and see you.
Great. Quorum is established. The minutes of last month's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved as distributed. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the agenda is approved. Now, we're going to take continuances and withdrawals. We'll go down the list of matters that I have, and then we'll open the floor for any additional requests. Okay, so first up, I am going to call the attorney here on matter 61-21-S. So this is. Let's see.
Hey, go ahead, go ahead.
Hello?
We're here.
We're here. This is Nick Nan and Jenny Marsinkowski.
Yeah, I miss Marsinkowski. We're just waiting for the attorney as well.
Nick Fatikas on that as well.
Hey, counselor. Okay, so on this one, we've had some moving pieces this week and don't feel that the board has had ample time to review, really at no fault of anyone's in particular. But because of this, we're going to be continuing this matter for one month, so that we don't feel unprepared going into it. So again, that's our shortest continuance, our most immediate, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone on the call understood.
So we're not going to have our hearing today?
Not today.
And could you tell me the reason again, please?
It's administrative. I don't feel, so this is an executive continuance. I don't feel that the board has had ample time to review. Some exhibits came in yesterday that weren't into the board's inbox until this morning. So it's just not prudent to vote on this today.
Were those, was those exhibits, our exhibits that you're referring to?
There was a mix, yeah. We, so the board did not receive the exhibits today. I'm not saying you didn't send them. We've had some administrative move around based on some things happening. So again, August, I'm not going to say anymore on the matter, but we're going to hear this in August.
Okay, and the reason I'll go judge coin made this remand happen, because we expected to have our hearing today, but if it's going to have to be put off for a month, then I guess that's what it's going to be.
Yep. Okay, so.
What day and what time will it be?
Yeah, give me a second. Counselor, do you understand as well? Okay, great. So again, this is calendar number 61-21-S. We will hear this on, it's August 19th, 2022, and no further notice will be given.
August 19th. What time again?
Same time, first up of the day.
Which is 9:00 AM versus 8:30, 9:00 AM?
Yep, it's 9:00 AM.
August 19th. Okay.
All right, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's move to calendar numbers 221, 222, and 223, 22Z. Counselor, are you on for this one?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Good morning.
Morning. So I believe you should know this already. For this one, we are going to be continuing one month as well. There was a request that came in ahead of time. So again, we give one month when they come in ahead of time, and we're just honoring that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. And I'm going to go to the alderman's office as well. Taylor, I see you on. And just want to confirm that understanding with you as well.
Good morning, Chairman. Could you repeat, please? My audio dropped out.
Oh, no worries. So, yeah, so for these matters, Taylor, we're continuing them one month based on the request and in hopes that, you know, it'll go on a regular call and that anything can be sorted out ahead of time.
Brilliant. That's the alderman's understanding, and we support the one-month continuance.
Okay, great. Thanks so much for coming. I want to make sure, there's someone with their hand raised. I'm going to promote Catherine Nardi to see if they're on this matter. Catherine, so I just promoted you. You should be able to unmute and speak.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm the homeowner in this matter that you just stated would be continued to August. And so I'll just ask the same question that the prior person asked. I just want to confirm exactly what date and time that's going to be.
Yeah, so I always say that when the continues instance done, so it's August, third Friday of August, which is August 19th, 2022, and it'll be at the same time, 9:00 AM, like our, you know, our regular order, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, great. So those are on the record. Now I'm going to go into the rest of the list. So can everyone for calendar numbers 228-22-S, 229-22-Z, and 230-22-Z be present?
Chairman, Nicholas Fatikas on behalf of the applicant in those three matters.
Okay, great. And is someone from DPD on for this one? It would be, is Nancy Razovich on?
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning. So this is being continued due to DPD request. So I just wanted to make sure, Nick, that you're in understanding of that and that you understand what's needed there.
Yeah, so actually, yesterday, we received a more detailed explanation of some of the areas of concern, areas where the additional details were provided or need to be provided. And we have all of that information already in process with our architect. So we're doing our best to respond to yesterday's email. We're optimistic that we can, you know, we'll be ready to present at the earliest date that the board can give us. And it's at your discretion, sir, as to what date we get.
Okay, okay, great. So yeah, so for this one, I've got to push you to our normal two months. As a standard, the two, I know we're coming off of two, we're got one month based on some different circumstances. But we, this will bring us to September 16th, 2022. Nancy, are you confirmed on that as well?
Yeah, I believe that we can work through the open questions, you know, before that time.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks, everyone. So again, these are calendar numbers 228-22-S, 229-22-Z, and 230-22-Z. And the board will be hearing these on September 16th, 2022, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, everybody. All right, the next up is 242-22-S and 243-22-S. So for this one, let's see if the applicant is on. Oh, and I'm going to promote, I see, I'm going to promote Thomas Murphy and Lori Smith. And Tom, you're all promoted, so if you unmute, you should be able to speak.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom Murphy for the applicant. And we've been similarly notified by DPD of interest in correcting some of our plans, and we should have those to them in about 10 days.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Counselor. And let me confirm, Lori Smith, I promoted you as well. Are you on for this matter? You'll just have to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm on for the Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know what matter that is. Is that the same matter we're talking about?
Um, so I think there's, I think there's two Dunkin' Donuts. That is not this one. What's the address?
Uh, it's in the 19th Ward, uh, on the corner of 111th Street.
In Monterey?
Monterey, yes.
Okay, and so, yeah, I see Alderman Talia Pharoah with their hand raised as well. Let me circle back to this one in a second, if that's okay. I just want to continue the one Tom requested, Alderman, and then I'll go straight to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, Tom, perfect. So we're going to continue this again for everyone's notes. We're talking about calendar number 242-22-S and 243-22-S. No further notice will be given, and it'll be getting our standard continuance of two months, which goes to September 16th, 2022.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Would it be possible to have it in August? We've been working closely with Nancy and the, it's just some minor revisions.
Yeah, no, I'm, and I apologize on this one, Tom. We're totally booked for August, other than those two that we kind of knew we were going to push into it. So we've got to, we've got to put this in September.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Counselor. Okay, Alderman, apologies, because I didn't see that you were on for 61-21-S, which we chatted about. So go ahead and, and make any statement.
I apologize, Chairman. I thought that, I thought you called 233-22-S.
Oh, sorry, we've been going, we're a little all over the place. We've been going rapid fire. But to confirm, you're on, you're on 61, right?
Um, well, I just have the calendar number on the card, on the notification card of 233-22-S. I'm not sure which calendar that is.
Yeah, we will, that's, okay, 233. Yep, that makes sense. You wouldn't be on, on the 61, the Dunkin' Donuts, because it's the 19th Ward. So 233 is, are you going to be requesting a continuance? I want to circle back on 61, but we'll get to 233. We're just not there yet.
Okay, I just have my committee on public safety, so I'll see if my.
I'll go right, I'll go right, right to you after I talk to Lori Smith about the Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate it.
Yep, thanks, Alderman. Okay, Lori, if you can unmute, I just want to make sure you understand as well that we continue the 61-21-S, which is the amended case, one month.
Okay.
So.
Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, so we continued this matter one month. It'll be August 19th, and it'll be at the same time. Are you going to be coming to object?
I didn't hear you. Say it again.
Will you be coming to object on this matter?
No, I'm for that. I'm not going to object it. I'm for it.
Okay, great. So then, just so you know, we're going to hear this in one month. It's 61-22-S, and we're not going to give further notice, so just be here at the same time on that date.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thanks so much. All right, Alderman Talia Pharoah, I know you've got committees, so we go back to you on 233 now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you, are you requesting a continuance on this one?
I am not. I just wanted to speak on it. I didn't know whether the applicants were on on the call today, but I just wanted to speak regarding the, regarding the application itself.
Understood. So we're going to have to take that one in order when we get to regular call. What I can tell you is, it's relatively early in our order. Maybe someone from, from staff can alert you when it's coming up, just because I know you'll be in committee. But right now, we're just to the point of taking continuances of withdrawals. And, and just so you know, someone from your office can speak. It doesn't have to be you if you're tied up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will have my staff assistant join you via Zoom from my office. I certainly appreciate it.
Great, yep, and we appreciate you coming. Thank you.
I thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. You guys have a good weekend.
You too. Okay, so is anyone here for calendar number 661-22-S, 262-22-S, 263-22-S, and 264-22-S? This would be Counselor Amy Curson.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Nancy Razovich. We did receive some revised plans that we're just checking to make sure that they got those last-minute corrections. So I'm, I don't think we're in the position yet to determine whether a continuance will be required.
Okay, and you know, so long as we have the DPD recommendation on this one today, we will hear it.
Right, we will, once we, once staff has an opportunity to review the final changes that they did, to confirm that it complies with what was needed, you know, we'll, we'll get you the recommendation on that then. If not, then, then I'll alert you through staff if, if we believe a continuance that will be needed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, how about 265-22-S and 266-22-Z? And I am promoting Counselor Tim Barton. Counselor, you're promoted. You've just got to unmute.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I am here on behalf of the applicant for case numbers 265-22-S and 266-22-Z. This is on page 10 of the agenda. The applicant will be withdrawing these two cases. This is for the address at 500 West 18th Street.
Okay, okay, great. So just so everyone has it on notice, again, that 265-22-S and 266-22-Z is being withdrawn. And thank you, Counselor, for coming and letting us know.
Sure.
Okay, now how about 13-22-S? And let's see.
Here I am.
Hey, Counselor. So 13-22-S, we're, this is a previously continued matter. So I just wanted to know what's going on here.
Yeah, so without belaboring it, this was one where the plans completely changed and all sorts of major differences, and we finally got it all together and we're ready for hearing. And then it was raised that because our property goes right to the street, there is no room for landscaping, that, that we needed a variance in addition to the, this is a gas station, in addition to the special use, and you gave us till today's date to get that done. We did, we were, it took a while to get the denial. And we have filed, but we didn't file on time for Victor to publish. And so unfortunately, we were not able to go forward today. So we would respectfully request whatever, this is a case, of course, that we're anxious to go forward on, but whatever date you can give us, we'd appreciate.
Okay, so again, because this is continued, normal route would be to push it three months. I'm going to give you the option here to do a two-month continuance, knowing that I'll dismiss it if you're not ready in two months.
That, that will work. I'm, I'm pretty confident. We're, we're pretty, we're pretty much there at this point, I believe. I have to meet with Nancy one more time, but I think we're fine.
Okay, so again, this is just on the record that everyone is aware I'll dismiss this matter in full, if not ready in two months. This is 13-22-S, and this will be heard in the September meeting, which is September 16th, 2022, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Okay, we're now going to calendar numbers 147, 148, and 149-22-Z.
I'm sorry, did you not, was I muted?
Oh, yeah. Tom, is this one you as well?
Yes, I'm sorry. So Tom Moore for the applicant, Mr. Nosar Amarin. And Mr. Amarin tells me that cost overruns and financing changes have caused him to go another route, so. So at his request, I'm requesting if you'll, i- if we can withdraw all three cases.
Yep, um, we can do that. So again, for everyone, this is calendar numbers one forty-seven, one forty-eight dash twenty-two, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine dash twenty-two dash Z, and these will be, um, totally withdrawn. Um, so thank you for coming and letting us know, Counselor.
Thank you.
All right, here's the, the last one on my list, um, I promise, is one ninety-five dash twenty-two dash V, and this is Counselor Faticus.
I actually was not aware of a continuance request for this one. We actually provided a letter of non-objection from Alderman Wagasback's office based on, uh, a pretty, uh, healthy community review process. So I'm, I'm not asking for a continuance. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure who, maybe.
Okay, we've got, um, there is a George Pop that I just promoted. George, are you on for this matter?
George is the applicant in this case?
Ah, okay, so, so no. So we have a request for continuance from both the Alderman's, um, office and the neighborhood group. Um, is anyone on from Alderman Wagasback's office?
Chairman, I, if, if we could possibly, it is at the end of the call, if we could possibly hold a continuance request, because we did provide a letter of no objection. I believe we received it from the Alderman's office Wednesday. I know that the Alderman had previously requested a continuance to work through some remaining issues. Um, but again, as, as, as of Wednesday, we were in full agreement. So I am not aware of a request, and to, to the contrary, I believe we now have a position of no objection, um, from, from the Alderman and from the association.
Okay, give me a second, Nick.
Chairman, not to belabor the point, um, but the email was from Paul Sagivik to Victor with me CC'd. It's the letters dated July fourteenth. Do, do you want me to read forward that to Victor?
No, we, we've got it. I'm just sorting out, Nick. I want to confirm that anyone who is, um, potentially objecting on this matter knows that, uh, they, I would like to get this off the books, so just give me a second.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Nick, I'm going to decide, just so we, we move forward with the meeting, that we are going to hear this one today. Um, I just want to make sure that, um, uh, everyone knows who was going to be on, potentially to object for one ninety-five dash twenty-two dash Z, that we will be hearing this today. I have, uh, the amended letter from the, from the Alderman, but I really just want to make sure everyone who would still like to object has the opportunity. Um, so again, we will be hearing this one today unless something changes.
Good, thank you.
Yep, thanks, everyone. Okay, is anyone else on to request a continuance or a withdrawal? Just raise your hand if you are. Okay, let's get on with the meeting. Um, first up, I'd like to call calendar numbers two seventy-five, two seventy-six, and two seventy-seven dash twenty-one. And I'm promoting Timothy Kane right now. Um, I believe we have Nick Standiford. Um, if anyone is here to object on these matters, please, um, just raise your hand. All right, Counselor, um, you can go right ahead. Because this is an extension, we don't have a formal letter, um, from DPD.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the zoning board. Um, I'm Nick Standiford. Um, here with me is Tim Kane on behalf of Seacraft LLC. Um, these are, there's three applications for extensions of our special use permits. Uh, two seventy-five, two seventy-six, and two seventy-seven are the calendar numbers. Uh, the first is a craft grow license, the second is a processor license, and the third is for an infuser, and these are all for cannabis. It's at ninety-nine thirty-three South Cottage Grove. Um, and I'll let, um, I, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you have the witness be sworn? I'll have him be sworn, and then talk about kind of the reason for the delay and what our next steps are and why we need another year to get this done.
Yep, sure thing. So, um, Timothy Kane, can you please state your name and, name and address, and also spell your last name?
Yes, uh, my name is Timothy Kane, K-A-N-E. Uh, I live at one five three nine Prairie Street in Aurora, Illinois.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
All right, so, uh, so, and then for the record, for the corporate, I'm Nick Standiford, S-T-A-N-D-I-F-O-R-D, uh, and that's at seventy West Madison, Suite twenty-three hundred, Chicago, Illinois. Um, so, uh, Tim, can you tell the, the zoning board about, um, why, wha- what the reason for the delays have been, and then what are we planning to do here in the next, uh, couple of months? And then when we think we're going to get this building permitted into Chicago?
Good, um, okay, primarily, we've been waiting for, uh, equipment and materials, uh, some of which are not, uh, related to the building itself, but some of them are. Everything that we do has to be approved by the state. In other words, we have detailed plans in all categories, uh, that the state has to approve. And, uh, we've submitted some of them, but not all of them. Primarily, uh, we're waiting for a racking system, and i- that's our biggest obstacle. These are the structures that will house, uh, all of the growing plants, and depending on the manufacturer and configuration, the interior rooms, meaning the growing rooms, would have to be resized. Now, we want mobile racking systems, and those are what we originally specified, uh, to the state. Those move back and forth so that we can have one aisle per room. It's a little bit like, like, like movable stacks in a, in a, in a filing system. Uh, if we can do that, we're, we're much more efficient. However, uh, lead times are still into next year on those racking systems. Our backup plan is to move to static racks, which are essentially tables. If we have static racks, there needs to be a permanent aisle between each set of racks. In that case, we have to have larger rooms. Larger rooms will require us to change our HVAC specifications, and the state has approval authority on, uh, authority on that as well. That would in turn affect our lighting. We're required to limit our grow lighting to thirty-six watts per square foot. Uh, if we have aisles between each row, we're going to need more lights, uh, and, and, and still have to, to, to stay within, uh, uh, you know, the state's, uh, specifications.
So, so, Tim, Tim, um, so we need a pre-construction permit from the Illinois Department of Agriculture, right?
That's correct.
And we're working on getting that in, and then once they approve that, we can go and submit our building permit to Chicago, correct? I think you're on. I think he's frozen, unfortunately. Um, but it, it looks like it was about to be a yes. Um, we'll see if he comes back on, but that's, that's the basis for our request.
Exactly, yes. Can you guys hear me now?
Yep, hear you, great.
Yeah, we are, uh, uh, we're in, in good shape with the state. We've submitted, uh, most everything that's not, that, that's not sort of floor plan dependent. Uh, we've also filed our, our annual renewal and just paid our forty thousand dollars in fees, and we, we've received acknowledgement from the state on those issues. Uh, uh, but we still have to, uh, submit our final floor plan, which is dependent on that equipment.
So we're going to, we anticipate submitting the building permit sometime this fall, correct?
Uh, I still think we're good for the September, October timeframe. We have received, uh, uh, an extension from the state on that, and, uh, the, the market has changed slightly in the structural steel. Uh, well, I, I don't want to get into too much detail on that, but there are some cracks, uh, the doors that are opening up for us, so that we'll be able to make that choice. We won't have to get delivery of those racking systems. We'll just need to be able to concretely know exactly what those are, so that we can submit the plans to the state.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tim. Appreciate that. So that's our testimony here today. Um, and we appreciate your consideration, and hope that you approve this extension request for all three matters. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I, there's a hand raised, so I just want to see if they're on for this, um, case. Uh, Mr. Byron Watson? I just promoted you.
We, um, this is Pam Moore, Alderman Tali Fera's Chief of Staff, using Byron's computer, but I'm not for this case. We just wanted to make sure I was in correctly.
Yep, you're in, you're in, and I've got a note to make sure that when that matter comes up, you guys, you, you'll get a, you'll get an opportunity to speak.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, thanks. Great, any questions from the board, um, for Counselor, for Timothy Kane? Okay, we'll take, um, this extension under consideration. Thanks, everyone, for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a great weekend.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving into writing our call. So the first stop is going to be calendar numbers two nineteen dash twenty-two dash V and two twenty dash twenty-two dash V, and this will be with Counselor Tom Moore.
Uh, hello again, um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, hopefully, we have, uh, Colleen and Joe Marnell and their architect, uh, Mike Ryan.
Colleen and Joe Marnell here.
And, um, I see, I see a mic with no last name on attendees, um.
Uh, Chairman, Mike Ryan is in, depending.
Perfect, we've got Mike Ryan. Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, Alderman, I'm sorry. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing the witnesses?
Yep, of course. Um, so first up, uh, Ms. Colleen Marnell, can you state your name and address and spell your last name?
Sure, my name is Colleen Marnell, M-A-R-N-E-L-L, and my address is eighteen thirty-eight Northwood Street, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Okay, and how about, uh, Joe Marnell? Will you do the same, uh, name and address?
Yes, I'm Joe Marnell, address eighteen thirty-eight Northwood Street, and, uh, um, Chicago, Illinois, and, uh, what was the other person? Oh, my, and Marnell, M-A-R-N-E-L.
Great, thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, thank you, and we'll get Mike Ryan on too. Mike, can you state your, your name and address, and, um, I think we can skip spelling your last name. Mike, you there?
I just clicked the unmute button. Um, my name is Mike Ryan, and I'm at eighteen fifty-nine North Elston in Chicago.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Okay, Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, who wants to be the spokesman, Colleen or Joe?
Uh, Colleen will be.
Very well. And, uh, so you live at this address, who do you live there with?
Yes, so I live here. Joe and I live here together with our two children. Um, our son is four, and our daughter is two months old.
And how, how long have you owned this building?
Um, we bought it about a year ago.
Okay, and so all the conditions, um, that you're now dealing with when you want to make a change, uh, were existing and, and conditions that you had to deal with. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and in the, uh, we're focused on the, your rear de- rear yard open spaces, is that right?
That's right, yes.
You want to have more room for your, uh, children to be able to play outside. Is that fair?
Yes.
And, and you have an existing deck, um, but you want to also have a garage roof deck, is that right?
Yes.
And, um, so you consulted Mr. Ryan, and, um, you want to extend the deck a little bit, and then uh, have an access to the garage roof deck. Um, and it, with his advice, you're going to have that access, uh, be parallel to the, um, to the garage wall, is that right?
That's right.
Be- because he told you that would be most compliant and, 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 uh, uh, most easy to get approval of. Is that a fair statement?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but, uh, and he'll tell us a little more about this difficulty, but, um, there's an oddity when you come in through the alley in your backyard, and that is that the, the rear of the yard, the rear of the lot, is depressed. It's, it's, you have to go down three feet from the, the, um, ground level of the, uh, alley, is that right?
That's right.
And so while normally your deck would be permitted, uh, at, at four feet above, uh, grade, because your, um, the grade or the ground, uh, sinks down three feet, uh, you, the things that hold up your deck have to be seven feet, is that right?
That's right.
And that's why we need that variance, is that correct?
Yes.
And then also, um, the, uh, in order to meet the open, since you're doing a new permit, you have to meet the current code on open space, and the, um, the way, and Mr. Ryan can tell us more about this, but the way it is measured has changed from when this building was built, and so you're asking to move your open space up onto the garage roof deck, deck to meet the current requirement, is that fair?
Yes, that's right.
But the result is you'll have both the open space from your deck and the open space up on your, uh, on your roof deck, so you'll actually have twice as much opens, or outdoor space, is that right?
Right.
Yeah, it, um, that's all I would ask of you. Um, and then, uh, Joe, do you have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Okay, a wise man. Um, Mike Ryan, um, will you explain to the board what practical difficulties or problems you had in designing, um, a, uh, addition to the existing deck and, um, uh, having a garage roof deck on this property?
Yes, um, uh, the challenge starts with, uh, the, the previous permit plans from the original building from twenty nineteen show that show that the entire site is flat. And that's not the condition of the site. The existing rear yard is sunken from the curb and the alley. And that's that's where the challenge comes in. Also, I want to mention that the existing deck that was built in twenty fourteen as part of the house is currently at five feet above the sidewalk and alley level. Our design lowers the deck a foot to be four feet above the sidewalk and curb level. It was my understanding in the zoning code that the deck, you know, can't be higher than four feet above grade. And when we originally submitted for the permit, I believed this was a code compliant design. I have learned since that the verbiage in the table near the end of the zoning ordinance has been revised or amended to state that the deck can't be more than four feet above the adjoining ground as opposed to grade. And I'm not sure when that change was made in the zoning ordinance, but that's where it tags our project. So the intent, the intent here was to meet the zoning ordinance and provide the deck at four feet above grade. It's more than four feet above the adjoining ground. But otherwise, you know, the design isn't in, you know, intended to be compliant. I think it's takes away from the design to sink the deck even further. Because at that point, we'd need a landing at the stairs, landing to create stairs coming out of the rear patio doors onto the deck. And that would take up a lot of the usable area. And it would create a condition where you have to go down even further steps in order to go back up even more steps to get to the garage rooftop deck. Also, I want to mention a small facet of the design is that the deck is in plan view. If you could go up a page, Tom. On the north side, the corner of the deck is within the required side yard setback. And the reason is to maximize the open space on the property. And if you go back to the site plan, you can see the the newly required circle diameter showing, you know, that's a required part of the rear yard open space. So if we take that bite out, that circle doesn't really fit. And that that brings us to the the compliance with the rear yard open space.
And so between twenty fourteen and current regulations, there've been a couple of changes that require the Mendels to come into current compliance. And you've described those and that's really the essence of why what otherwise would just be a garage roof deck that could be permitted. Why we need these this variance? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're otherwise totally complies with all rules and regulations and ordinances. Is that right?
Yes.
If I may ask one more question of Colleen. Colleen, well, here, excuse me, Mr. Ryan, will, in your opinion, does this fit into the character of the neighborhood as it will be completed?
Yes.
And Colleen, have you talked to your neighbors about whether or not they approve or disapprove of your request here?
Yeah, we have talked to our neighbors on both sides. They have garage decks as well. And this design kind of mirrors what one of our neighbors had originally. So they're excited for the opportunity for us to have this, you know, the same kind of space that they have on their decks.
And you'll be able to wave at them from yours to them.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief.
Okay, thanks, counselor. Any questions from the board?
I I have a question for for Mr. Ryan. Is the is the hardship, is it the what the the sunken nature of the of of the ground there? What what can you articulate the hardship a little bit more?
Yes, that that is the hardship.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there, what what could be done as a matter of right here?
Well, you know, I think we we discussed that you know, it would be possible to put in concrete retaining walls and you know, figure out how to get dump trucks of earth into raise the level of the adjoining ground. But given there's an existing garage and an existing house, the access is very limited. And it would add a a great deal of expense that's unnecessary to the project.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right. Thanks, everybody. And we will take these matters under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thanks. Okay, and as a reminder to everyone, two twenty-one, two twenty-two and two twenty-three have been continued. So we're going to go to calendar numbers two twenty-four dash twenty-two dash S and two twenty-five dash twenty-two dash Z. If anyone is here to object on these matters, please raise your hand and I'll I I or the team will get you promoted. This is going to be Counselor Tim Barton. While the counselor is getting situated with the applicants, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation on especially use. So for calendar number two twenty-four dash twenty-two dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of post-school, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Merlin Day LLC and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and documents dated July thirteen, twenty twenty-one, prepared by SEEK Design and Architecture.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tim Barton.
Counselor, I'm just promoting your applicant, or I think I think they're the applicant Laura Maraz.
Good morning.
Counselors, is Laura, Laura, are you the applicant?
Yeah, she is. Yes. Good. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Tim Barton. I am an attorney with offices at twenty North Whacker Drive in Chicago. I'm here this morning on behalf of the Merlin Day Academy for their applications for a special use and a variation for the property at thirty-three nineteen North Elston Avenue. Mr. Chairman, there are two cases here, so I'm requesting that our hearing be consolidated for them to hear both of these.
Yep, agreed.
Good, thank you. The applicant, Merlin Day Academy, is seeking a special special use approval to operate its day school for special needs children in grades first through eighth. The program will operate in an existing twenty thousand six hundred and fifty square foot building, two-story brick building. There is unimproved parking area adjacent to the building to the south. A twenty-nine space parking lot and playground are planned for this area. The property was rezoned to its current C one-two zoning in February for the purpose of establishing the school. The rezoning was supported by Alderman Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez and the Avondale Neighborhood Association. The school is also seeking a variation to waive the landscape requirements. The parking lot will provide all of the required parking for the school and for an associated pediatric therapy clinic that will occupy the remainder of the building. The Department of Planning and Development issued a parking determination letter for the school establishing fifteen parking spaces as the required minimum. Parking for IS Landing, the clinic that will also be in the building will be based on its total floor area and will be at least thirteen spaces. Thus, the total parking required at the site would likely be twenty-eight spaces, which is one less than what is being proposed. The landscape required would have an impact on the number of spaces. Since the date that this variation was filed with the board, the applicant has worked with the Department of Planning and Development to modify the parking layout. And as a result, much of the landscaping for which the denial was originally being sought has now been provided. Specifically, you'll see the three trump, three trees and shrubbery are being added on Elston Avenue. Shrubbery is being added along the fence on Henderson. There'll be three trees within the parking area. And a hose bib has been added to the plan. These are all included in the revised plan that was submitted to the CVA staff. Based on the amended plans and submitted and reviewed by the chief landscape examiner, the applicant is now requesting a variation to one, reduce the number of required perimeter trees from six to five along Elston Avenue. And the required number of interior trees from six to four. And that includes a large existing tree in front of the playground area next to the driveway near the north-south alley. This request is significantly less than what was originally sought, and I'm asking that this amended variation be accepted. We have three witnesses today. Laura Maraz, who is the founder and CEO of the Merlin Day Academy, George Kissel with Oakland Kissel Associates, our urban planner, and Jason Nudelman, Seek Design, the architect of record. The property owner is also Seth Halpern, that's also available to testify. With that, I'd like to call Dr. Maraz as the first witness.
Yep, great. Dr. Maraz, can you please state your your name, spelling your last name and your address as well?
Yes, Dr. Laura Maraz. It's M as in Mary, R A Z as in zebra. And my home address is thirty South Troop Street in Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Counselor, do you want me to go down the list?
I'm sure that'd be fine.
Are you, do you intend to speak to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so Jason Nudelman, will you state your name and address, spelling your last name?
Yes, hi, Jason Nudelman. Last name is spelled N as in Nathan, U T T E O M A N. And my home address is thirty-seven twenty-six North Milwaukee Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four two.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thanks. George Kissel, will you state your name and address, please, spelling your last name?
Certainly. My name is George Kissel, last name spelled K I S I D L. Office location, one forty-one West Jackson in Chicago.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Great.
Go ahead, counselor.
I, if you want to swear, Mr. Halpern, and that's great. I was, I wasn't going to ask any questions or have any testimony with from him, but he's available.
How about, how about Jared? Are you going to speak with Jared?
No.
Okay, great. Then you can go right, you can go right ahead, counselor.
Okay, thank you. So, Dr. Mars, you're there, okay. Can you please tell the board your position with the Merlin Day Academy?
Yes, I'm Dr. Laura Maraz. I am the CEO and founder of Merlin Day Academy, a new organization that we've created.
Right. And can you tell us what the academy is? Give us a description of its mission.
Sure, yeah. Our mission is really to provide improved education experience for children with special needs. So it is an inclusive program. All children in the program are receiving intensive therapy in addition to academic program. So it would service kids first grade through eighth grade. And we also are seeking Illinois State of Education, so is be approval so that children can also be placed here if their homeschool is not working out for them or they need a more specialized intervention.
Great, okay, thank you. Let's see, how many students do you anticipate at the school?
We're anticipating about sixty students over the next few years. We're definitely going to scale into that number.
Okay. They're showing the plans up on the screen here. Want to note that the school will occupy the second floor. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what are the hours of operation of the school?
Yeah, from eight to three thirty.
Okay. And how will children arrive at the site?
And it would be a variety of different ways. I would say the majority of our students would arrive by their caregiver. And there may be a few students that arrive on bus, depending if they're placed by their school district. But that's very hard to get that placement, so I suspect that would be a lower number. And the majority are going to be dropped off by their parents.
Sure, I understand. Will the academy be the sole occupant of the building?
No, our therapeutic clinic, which has been that we've owned for fifteen years, will actually take the first floor. And so that's really going to help us be able to provide that additional therapeutic intervention for the kids before and after school as well as service the community with early intervention and other types of therapeutic services.
Okay. And you're the CEO of IS Landing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and IS Landing is not part of this application, but we're just telling the board this so it has an understanding of the full occupancy of the building. Can you tell us how many children? Well, what are the ages of the children who will be using the clinic?
For IS Landing, it will, this is a more of a range of ages. So it could be as young as, you know, six months to eighteen months are usually our youngest referrals and it can go up to twenty-one years. But they don't all come at the same time, typically in the morning as our younger. As the day progresses, our older kids come in after school.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Maraz, did our office prepare an affidavit on your behalf, which you reviewed and signed?
Yes, I did.
If I were to continue questioning you today, would your answers be consistent with the statements in that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to call George Kissel. George, are you there?
I am.
Good. Mr. Kissel, please state your name and address. Your business.
Sure, my name is George Kissel. I'm the president of Oakland Kissel Associates with offices at one forty-one West Jackson in Chicago. I'm a licensed architect and certified planner, nearly four years of experience in the field of zoning and urban planning.
You were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of the proposal to establish the school use and the accessory accessory clinic with twenty-nine onsite parking spaces in the existing two-story building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And have you prepared a report detailing this analysis, your findings and conclusions? And have you prepared a report detailing this analysis, your findings and conclusions?
I have.
Submitted that, which we have submitted to the board?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel, may I ask, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in that report? Specifically, that proposed development is consistent with the general character, the general criteria for special use approval?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
And Counselor, one second, sorry to interject. Evan Smith has their hand raised, and I just want to confirm that you're not on this objective of this matter.
Yes, if, okay, if you can hear me, I apologize.
Yeah, so are you on for, for this matter, or are you on for two twenty-seven?
No, I'm on for the next one, I believe.
Okay, good, well, we got you promoted, we're, okay, perfect, no need to raise your hand until then.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kissel. Mr. Nudelman, are you there?
I am here.
Now, do you prepare the site and landscape plan for the, for the school? Is that right?
That is correct.
And this is an existing lot now, paved lot.
That is correct.
And how will the school be using the lot? Can you give us an overview of that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, a majority of it will be used for parking. We're providing twenty-nine spaces. There are four drop-off spaces as well. And then we're also accommodating a future playground for the school that would be in the northeast portion of the existing lot.
Okay. That'll be along the alley.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Protected.
Good, yes. The site plan shows twenty-nine spaces. Can you tell us if that's sufficient to meet the minimum parking requirements?
Yeah, that is.
For the two uses?
Yeah, we're exceeding by one space, working with DPD to, to get the parking determination letter. Was to provide fifteen spaces for the Merlin Day Academy. And with the remaining program of IAS Landing and the medical services use, that totaled out to thirteen parking spaces, so that brings us to twenty-eight that are required. And we are providing twenty-nine on this lot.
So this was reviewed by the Department of Zoning and was issued, and a denial was issued by the landscape examiner. Can you tell us why that was?
Yes, initially, we were proposing that no landscaping would be required as we needed to accommodate the required parking and future parking, or future playground use of the building. But as we were communicating and working with DPD, we were able to then provide additional landscaping within the lot to maintain the twenty-nine spaces. But then also make more efficient the flow and circulation within the parking lot.
Right, and that's the plan that's being shown right now.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Nudelman, did our office prepare an affidavit for you, and did you review and sign that?
Yes, that's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your statements be consistent with what was in that affidavit?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that completes our testimony. Of course, we're available for questions.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ross, can you just give a brief overview, additional overview on kind of the drop-off pickup process with the school?
Yes, of course. We take drop-off really pretty seriously in our program as it is now, and it's something that we monitor, especially in our outpatient practice, because, you know, there are certain times where there's a higher volume than others. And it, it changes seasonally during, you know, summer versus the school year. And so we're, during each of those seasonal change, we do an audit of our system to determine how many kids will be dropped off throughout the day. And once it hits a certain number, we implement a drop-off where all of our staff come out and actually pick the children up from their cars and move, move the cars along. So that was our hope with this parking lot on the inside, that during our high-volume drop-off areas, we can use, you know, having them come in through the parking lot in a contained area, and our staff can help assist them into the, the building. During low times, we would then utilize the parking spaces, have them designated for the client so that they can park, and the parent can bring them into the building.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board for, for anyone who's spoken? Okay, I think we have everything we need, so thanks everyone for your time, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chairman, members of the board.
Enjoy your weekend.
You as well.
We're actually going right back to you, Counselor, with calendar number two twenty-six dash twenty-two dash Z. If anyone is here to object on this matter, please raise your hand, and we'll make sure to get you promoted.
And there should be two witnesses promoted here. Frank Ruffalo and.
Richard, Richard James, we've, we've got Frank, I'm looking for Richard.
Mr. Barnes just has to accept the promotion. There we go.
Oh, there we go, perfect.
Great, thanks.
Hello?
Yep, Counselor, you can go right ahead.
Okay, good, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Tim Barton. I'm an attorney with offices at twenty North Wacker Tribe in Chicago. I'm here this morning on behalf of Frank Ruffalo for a variation request for his property at thirty-two sixteen South Princeton Avenue. Mr. Ruffalo has lived in the neighborhood all of his life, and his family has owned this subject property for twenty years. His intention is to demolish an existing single-family dwelling unit at the front of the property shown here and replace it with a new residence and to reserve an existing two-story coach house at the back of the lot. The garage is one hundred plus years old. It came from a time when this was actually drainage operation at the property. It sits on the north property line, and it's, as a result, it sits within the required two-foot setback. And hence, that's the need for this, for this request. The new house will be connected to the garage building located at the rear. It's, there will be a two-story link. It will be a substantial connection, and it will meet the standards of the zoning bureau. We worked with the zoning bureau to get their design implemented. The garage building has three existing residential units, which will be retained. The access will be off of the alley, and the alderman has given her support for that. There is an existing driveway on Princeton Avenue, and it will be removed, so there won't be any commercial use of the property. The property was rezoned in January in order to provide the sufficient floor area to build the new residence and to preserve the garage, community meeting was held at that time. And there was unanimous support for the project then. In addition, at this point, neighborhood support letters have been submitted. They were submitted after the cutoff on Monday. Or some of them were, however, there was one from the neighbor immediately to the north at thirty-two twelve South Princeton. So, Chairman, I have two witnesses here. Frank Ruffalo, the applicant, and Richard Barnes, who is the project architect, so can you sign, can you swear them in?
Yep, absolutely. So Frank, can you please state your name, spelling your address, or sorry, name, spelling your last name, as well as your address?
Sure, Frank Ruffalo, R U F F O L O. The address is thirty-two forty South Princeton Avenue.
Great, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And Richard, will you please state your name and address?
Richard J. Barnes, Jr., three hundred A West Lake Street, Elmhurst, Illinois, six oh one two six.
Great, and can you spell your last name, please?
B A R N E S.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was just planning to do the short format for this, for their testimony.
Yeah, I, no, I think that's good, and I'll just say one more time, if anyone is on to inject for this matter, two twenty-six twenty-two Z, please just raise your hand. But Counselor, no one did previously, so you can go ahead with the short version.
Thank you. Mr. Ruffalo, did you sign an affidavit relating to this case, which we in fact submitted on your behalf to the board?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your statements be consistent with what was in that affidavit?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Did you sign an affidavit, a similar affidavit relating to this case, which we submitted to the board with our findings of fact?
I did, yes.
And again, if I were to continue questioning you today, would your answers be consistent with the statements in that affidavit?
They would.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the, the hardship here is essentially preserve the existing garage, which is on the north property line, sits on the north property line, and is within, therefore, within the two-foot setback that's required. But the requirement cannot be met since the building is existing and sits on the property line. So that concludes our testimony, and we'll be happy to answer questions.
Thanks, and Counselor, can you just give another brief overview of what's currently on this lot, how many units, et cetera?
There are a total of three existing units in the coach house. The front house, and correct me if I'm wrong about this, Mr. Ruffalo is vacant.
That's correct.
So also, after the project, how many, how many dwelling units will be after all is done?
There will be four.
Okay, so four in total?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Okay, we, we've got what we need on this one, and we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to hop to calendar number two twenty-seven dash twenty-two dash Z. This will be with Counselor Scott Borstein. While Counselor is getting situated, is anyone here to object on this matter, two twenty-seven dash twenty-two dash Z? Okay, Counselor, I'm not seeing any hands, so you can go right ahead.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Scott Borstein, B S M Boy, O R S T E I N, from the Law Office of Neil and Roy, here on behalf of the Chicago Board of Education. I'm joined today by Evan Smith, who I think should already be on.
Yes, I am.
Great, and our project engineer, Chad Hooper. And this is a very straightforward case, so we'll do an expedited question here, but this is for the Stag Stadium, has an address of seventy-four eleven South Aberdeen, and you see the seventy-four twenty-four South Morgan Avenue as well. All we are doing, and the only request before you today, is for the replacement of the outmoded scoreboard that serves the stadium with a new one. And it's going in the same location as the prior one, but that location is within the rear setback. And it's really, it's, you, yeah, you can see it there. It's really in terms of vantage points and views from the stands and other locations, it's really the only, the only location for the scoreboard, and that's why it's going back in the same location. So with that, and, and I, I don't know if you got it in time, but we did provide a, a letter of support from the alderman. And we've, you know, had no objections or calls or questions of any kind from anybody in the community regarding the project. So with that, I would just ask that the witnesses be sworn in, and we can give them the expedited questions here.
Okay, great, yep, let's swear in. Evan Smith first, Evan, can you state your name and address?
Yes, Evan Smith, Director of Planning and Design for Chicago Public Schools, forty-two West Madison, six oh six oh two.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay, now Chad, Chad Hooper, will you state your name and address as well?
Yeah, Chad Hooper, H O O E R, business address is three 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 South Displanes, Chicago, six oh six six one.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, so I'll start with Evan. Evan, you know, in your capacity as the Director of Planning for CPS, an affidavit was prepared by our office, but you reviewed and signed, which sets forth various findings and conclusions regarding this that address the standards required for variation. And are, are you familiar with that affidavit? And if I were to continue questioning you today, would your testimony be consistent with the contents and findings of that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Great. And then Chad, again, our office prepared an affidavit, and you have reviewed that affidavit, and you are familiar with the findings and conclusions of that affidavit, again, also addressing various issues relating to the standards required for variation. And if you were, and you're familiar with that, correct, then if you were to testify today further, your testimony would be consistent with those findings and conclusions, correct?
Yes.
Great. So that's our, our case in chief. Mr. Chairman, of course, we're here for any questions from you or any other member of the board.
Thanks, Counselor. Any questions from, from board members on this one? Okay. Not surprising, doesn't seem like we have many questions, so we'll take this under consideration.
Great, thank you very much, everybody. Enjoy their weekend.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to calendar number two thirty-one dash twenty-two dash S. We are going to be looking for counseling specifics on this one. Counselor, the fatigue is on this one. And while we get situated, if anyone is here to object on this matter, raise your hand, and we'll make sure that you're able to speak. And is Nancy Radzovich on as well?
I am.
Nancy, on this one, do you mind if I swear you in and have you read the recommendation because it is a denial?
Um. Sure, let me grab a copy of that.
No worries, I can read it. We'll, we'll get to swearing you in and just have you on if there's questions related to the denial. I'll go ahead and read it though.
Okay.
Great. Okay, as everyone gets promoted, I'm gonna use this recommendation. So for calendar number two thirty-one dash twenty-two dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends denial of the proposal to establish a drive-through to serve a proposed one-story restaurant at the subject site. The subject site is located in the southwest corner of Howard Street and Ridge Boulevard. And while properties to the immediate north within Abenston are improved with primarily single-story commercial uses, this site is immediately abutted on the west and east with multi-story mixed-use buildings. And to the south by a mid-density residential structure and predominantly residential uses continuing south along Ridge. The Howard Street bus stop is located at the corner and serves as a connection for pedestrians to the Howard Street Station hub. This site, as designed, will have an adverse impact on the neighborhood and community due to the strong potential for vehicular and pedestrian conflicts with dual lanes of vehicles from the drive-through and the parking lot being concurrently and immediately directed out to Ridge with an excessively wide one-way exit drive. Regardless of the proposed pavement marking, a dual-lane exit will encourage some drivers to seek to turn left, which is further complicated if they are on the south side of the drive and based on the proximity to the signalized intersection. This excessively wide dual-lane exit also poses safety risks to pedestrians walking along the adjacent public sidewalk. As drivers must not only look for potential conflicts along street and sidewalk, but also immediately alongside of them. Based on the site layout, there is also high potential for internal pedestrian and vehicular conflicts. While the Howard Street entrance drive is reduced in width to reflect and control the one-way inbound access, the internal one-way north-south drive aisle at thirty-one feet, three inches is nearly twice as wide as would be expected for a standard one-way drive aisle. This excessive width not only encourages concurrent vehicular movements in and out of the adjacent and or opposing parking spaces and through the site, but also may confuse some drivers into thinking that the accessway is designed for two-way travel. Further, excessively wide access routes, both drive aisle and driveways, facilitate and encourage higher speeds of travel, which is contrary to how a restaurant site would be designed. With predominance of excessively wide vehicular accessways, the site plan is not designed to encourage pedestrian safety and comfort onsite as well as offsite. Customers parking along the far western and southernmost parking spaces are forced to walk through dual and in some areas excessively wide lanes of traffic with no protection. Based on the foregoing, it is the department's opinion that the proposal to establish a drive-through to serve a proposed one-story restaurant at the subject site is not compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site plan and project design, does not promote pedestrian safety and comfort, is not in the interest of the public convenience, and will have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of this neighborhood and commercial order. Okay, and if you are on, I'm just gonna say one more time, if anyone's on to object, please raise your hand. All right, how we're gonna run this, because I know DPD and CDOT is on. And it was a pretty extensive recommendation of denial. I'm gonna go ahead and run it as if it's an objective matter, DPD and CDOT being the objectors. So I know Counselor and those parties know the process here, but in case anyone's watching that doesn't, Counselor and applicant will give their case in chief. The board will ask questions during that case in chief. Then we'll move over to the objectors who can, you know, briefly summarize the objection that very well was stated in the denial recommendation. But they can also ask questions of the applicant. The board can ask questions of them. Then we'll move to applicant for short closing questions and finish this thing out. So with that, Counselor Nick Fatikas, you can go ahead and get started.
Chairman, before we even begin the case, I'm a little concerned that the DPD recommendation was written regarding a prior set of plans. We submitted plans last week showing a reduced down to twenty-four-foot exit-only drive. The recommendation letter specifically referenced the existing driveway dimension of, I believe, thirty-one feet. So we provided last week, again, an updated traffic engineering report as well as a complete set of plans. And the plans and the recommendation letter don't match. So I.
Okay, so let's go to Nancy Radzovich. I'm gonna swear you in, Nancy, because you're the correct person to address that. So can you please state your name and role?
Absolutely. Nancy Radzovich, Assistant Commissioner in the Zoning Bureau of the Department of Planning and Development.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the, I know there was a lot of information there. The recommendation was based on the latest middle, which has a twenty-four-foot wide dual-lane exit of Ant Ridge and a thirty-one-foot, and I thought it was three-inch-wide interior north-south access aisle. One-way access aisle.
Okay, Counselor.
Yep, those plans, again, I'm, Chairman, I'm just very concerned that we're not looking or talking about the same plan set. Because everything that I'm looking at was revised. And without being redundant, the department's position letter talked about an excessively oversized driveway and not the reduced twenty-four-foot driveway.
Twenty-four-foot wide one-way is wider than a typical one-way driveway.
I understand. And again, I just wanna make sure your letter, if I took down notes, referenced thirty-one feet, and that's an incorrect dimension. Is that, are we in agreement on that?
The plan set that we reviewed had a thirty-one-foot, three-inch-wide interior drive aisle. And everything in the recommendation related to the thirty-one-foot dimension was related to that one-way thirty-foot, one, thirty-one-foot wide drive aisle. Every aspect of the recommendation related to the exit drive onto Ridge is related to the twenty-four-feet-wide proposed exit onto, one-way exit onto Ridge dual lane.
The dual lane?
Sorry, who's speaking?
Oh, my grandma wanted me to join the meeting.
Okay, who is this, though? Are you, are you on to object?
Up to object?
Yeah, are you present to object?
I'm just listening. I'm just trying to just take it all in right now.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and mute you, and we'll we'll come to you on objection to see if you do object. So go ahead, Nick and Nancy.
Okay. I think as long as we're talking about the plan set and the updated traffic report that was submitted last week, I think we're okay to proceed. The way I heard the letter of, or the letter of denial, a recommendation of denial was based on a prior plan. Some of the numbers didn't match, but I believe based on Nancy's testimony, the objection stands, and we're willing or ready to proceed with our hearing.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. And would it be helpful if I read the only sentence again that includes a number within the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I'm out. I object.
Okay, so again, only speak if it's your turn, so.
Hey, listen, speak when I want to, okay? I'm running the show.
All right, I think that.
I've removed permission to speak for that person, Chairman.
Yeah, you can just remove them. Come on. Okay, so the sentence related to the measurement is, while the Howard Street entrance drive is reduced in width to reflect and control the one-way inbound access, the internal one-way north-south drive aisle at thirty-one feet, three inches is nearly twice as wide as would be expected for a standard one-way drive aisle.
And I think we're, I understand, there's no reference to a thirty-one-foot exit drive width, driveway width.
Okay, yep. I read it as drive wild, drive aisle too. So what you're saying is the exit width is at twenty-four feet.
Correct. I just wanna make sure that's crystal clear for the record, and the plan set that's being presented reflects correctly the dimensions proposed.
Okay, good, yep.
We're on the same page. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that was sorted out before we got into our case.
Okay, great. Yep, thanks, Counselor. And with that, I think we can get started. When we get to objectors, I will see if anyone is on to make a substantive objection. So with that, Counselor, you can go right ahead.
All right, thank you. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Stan Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Solem Management Incorporated. The applicant actually owns now the subject property at twenty-two oh one through fifteen West Howard Street. The subject site contains approximately eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety square feet of total lot area, and it's improved with a vacant, excuse me, a vacant retail building and a five-lane drive-through facility, along with accessory onsite parking. To the best of our knowledge, the property was most recently occupied by Byline Bank, but the bank closed this loop. And it's our understanding the building has actually been vacant for approximately five years. The applicant is proposing to adapt and reuse the existing retail building and reorganize the drive-through facility to serve a proposed general restaurant at the property. The plans call for the installation of code-compliant landscaping, perimeter fencing, exterior lighting, twenty-one onsite parking spaces, and again, a single drive-through lane. In order to permit the revised or reorganized drive-through concept to support the restaurant, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a C-one dash three zoning district. I have four witnesses available to testify. Chairman, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Suhaq Lockandwalla, our design engineer, Mr. Gulam Kamal, our traffic engineer, Ms. Jennifer Mitchell, who I will inform the board, is standing in for Lynn Means, one of her colleagues, who had a scheduling conflict for today's hearing. And then lastly, I have our MAI appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien, again, our fourth witness. So do you wanna swear those witnesses in now or when they're called to testify?
Yeah, let's just go down the way I say. I find it to be sometimes more efficient. Okay, so first up, Suhaq Lockandwalla, will you state your name, spelling your last name, as well as your address?
Mr. Suhaq Lockandwalla is on the phone. He has to press star six to unmute. Yes, hello, this is Suhaq Lockandwalla.
Great. Mr. Lockandwalla, will you please state your name and address, spelling your last name?
Sure. Suhaq Lockandwalla, L O K H A N B W A L A. My address is twenty-five West Goble Drive, Lombard, Illinois, six zero one four eight.
Great, thank you, sir. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, great. We've got Mohammed Najibuddin. Mohammed, will you please state your name and address, spelling your last name? You're gonna have to press star six to unmute as well.
He's joining in as panelist now. I've been trying to promote him.
Hello, this is Mohammed Najib.
Great, yep, sir. Can you please state your name and address, spelling your last name?
Yeah, my last name is Mohammed, and my first name is Najib. My address is two seven zero four West Peterson Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six five nine.
Great, thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I swear.
Great. Okay, we've got we've got Terrence O'Brien on. Terrence, can you state your name and address, please?
Terrence Michael O'Brien, O P R I E N, professional real estate appraiser and consultant. At the time I prepared my report, a subsequent that I relocated my offices, so my new address is one four five Revere Drive, and that's in Northbrook, Illinois.
Great, all right, thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, and we acknowledge your expertise based off of many past appearances in front of the board.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, and finally, last but not least, Jennifer Mitchell, will you state your name and address?
Yes, Jennifer Mitchell, three thirty-three Pierce Road, Suite two hundred, Itasca, Illinois, six zero one four three.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Counselor, I think that was all of them.
Thank you, Chairman. And again, before I call my first witness, I did wanna summarize several of the changes that have been incorporated into the plan that's being presented to the board today. And Jeanette, if you can go back to the site plan, I'd appreciate, the site or landscape plan, I'd appreciate it. First, the driveway located along West Howard has been reduced to twelve feet, six inches, and it's been designated as an entrance-only driveway. We also added a pedestrian crosswalk and adjusted the drive-through lane so that it runs parallel to the rear of the restaurant building. Again, the bank that previously operated at this property had a five-lane drive-through facility, and we believe the reduction to one is a significant change. Based on the site plan changes, we also reduced the number of onsite customer parking spaces from twenty-five to seventeen. We also have two dedicated employee spaces as well as two delivery spaces, so it's a total of twenty-one parking spaces that are being provided. And again, as we discussed, we also reduced the driveway specifically on North Ridge from over thirty-one feet down to twenty-four feet. We've also designated that drive as a exit and right turn only to help reduce the risk of any kind of pedestrian or vehicle conflicts. And our traffic engineer will be able to speak to that in further detail in just a few minutes. But we wanted to make sure that the board was aware of some of the changes that we have been able to accommodate leading up to today's hearing. And with that, I would ask to call the applicant as my first witness, Mr. Lockandwalla.
Yes.
So can you, again, please state your name and address for the record?
To heart Lockandwalla, twenty-five West Goble Drive, Lombard, Illinois, six zero one four eight.
And again, you're the president of the applicant, Solem Management Incorporated?
Yes.
And that entity owns that entity owns the subject property at twenty-two oh one through fifteen West Howard Street, is that right?
Yes.
And as I stated in my introduction, you're planning to adapt and reuse the existing one-story retail building so that it can function as a general restaurant.
Yes.
And the restaurant will actually operate under the new name Fusion Chicken.
Yes.
And it'll offer a wide variety of food options, including breakfast and coffee options, chicken dishes, wraps, burgers, and other traditional American fare. Is that right?
That's right.
And the reason we're here today is because you're proposing to reorganize the existing five-lane drive-through facility to function as a single-lane drive-through for your restaurant.
That's right.
And it's true that you have over fifteen years of experience in the food service and restaurant industry?
That's right.
Based on that experience, you feel you need the drive-through lane in order to stay competitive in the market? in order to stay competitive in the marketplace, is that right?
That's right.
And that's especially true, given the other restaurants and food options, uh, up and down West Howard Street, correct?
Right, yes.
Um, now, Suhaq, in terms of operations, the restaurant's dining area will be open seven days a week between six AM and eleven PM?
Yes.
And the drive-through lane will, uh, operate during those same hours, correct?
Yes.
And you plan on hiring approximately fifteen employees to help you run the store?
Yes.
And that's, again, a combination of, uh, full-time and part-time workers, um, cooks and, and managers, uh, all, all across staff, right?
Yes, yes.
And based on your ongoing communication with Alderman Haddon, you've made a commitment to hire employees from the community?
That's right.
And it's your understanding that the Alderman has actually issued a letter of support for the proposed restaurant with drive-through lane, is that right?
That's right.
Chairman, again, I, I believe a copy of, uh, Alderman Haddon's letter of support, uh, was included with our findings of facts, so I just wanted to reference it for the record. Uh, Suhaq, is it your understanding my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, Najib, are you, are you on with us?
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, Chairman, if there are any questions for the applicant, or would you like me to go to the next witness?
Yeah, yeah, Nick, you can keep going, and we'll take them when you're through.
Okay, great, um, so Najib, you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Mohammed Najibuddin, address is two seven zero four West Peterson Avenue, Chicago, Illinois six zero six five nine.
You're a structural engineer in the state of Illinois?
Uh, no, no, not, I'm the professional engineer, but I'm, uh, the assistant of the architect.
And you've previously testified in front of this board in that capacity, is that right?
Yeah.
And you designed the adaptive reuse program for the restaurant and drive-through lane proposed at the subject property?
Yes.
You know, with respect to the site design, um, customers will use the now-reduced driveway on West Howard Street on the north side of the property to access the site, is that right?
Yes.
And that driveway will lead customers to the onsite parking stalls, as well as the entrance to the drive-through lane, right?
Right.
Customers using the drive-through lane will then exit the property using the existing driveway back onto North Ridge, correct?
Correct.
And again, we've reduced the size of that driveway from the current thirty, over thirty-one-foot dimension to twenty-four feet, correct?
Correct.
We've also dedicated it as a right-turn-only, uh, exit, correct?
Correct.
So cars that are, there are no cars will be able to access the property from that drive, right?
Right.
And the cars that are exiting the property would exit southbound under Ridge Street, correct?
Correct.
And again, by making these, uh, accommodations and changes, specifically reducing the size of the, uh, driveway, as well as the additional signage, your, you believe that this helps, uh, better ensure the site's safe and functional use of the driveway, is that right?
Right.
And that extends beyond the driveway to the traffic circulation on the site as well, correct?
Correct.
Now, the reason, obviously, we have concerns with a, a number of points made in the department's, um, recommendation letter, but one of the biggest issues is that a suggestion was made to further reduce the driveway on Ridge, is that right?
Right.
And the concern that we have with that is it would force the cars leaving the drive, the, uh, drive-through lane to essentially bottleneck with the traffic using the regular customer-vehicle access lane before exiting the property, is that right?
Right.
So, our design solution to avoid the cars merging together was to reduce the driveway to twenty-four feet and allow that traffic a more straight path out of the property, is that right?
Right.
And again, we're a little bit limited on that side of the property, given the location of the existing building we're attempting to relocate, or to, uh, adapt and reuse, and our, uh, eastern property line, correct?
Correct.
And in addition to reducing, uh, the driveway, as well as installing the appropriate signage, we've also dedicated a pedestrian walkway onsite, um, also to help improve pedestrian conditions, uh, on, on the property, is that true?
That's true.
And again, Najib, none of those, uh, sign, none of those signage elements, none of that pedestrian-dedicated walkway, none of that exists at the property today, correct?
Correct.
So in your professional opinion, the site, and in particular, of course, the point of egress back onto Ridge, um, has been designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Right.
Is that, is that right?
Right.
Now, um, separate from the drive-through layout, the plan provides seventeen onsite parking spaces for customers, two delivery parking spaces, and two employee parking spaces, is that right?
That's right.
And as I discussed, uh, or as, as I explained earlier, our plan is to incorporate code-compliant landscaping, outdoor lighting, and fencing elements, right?
Right.
So, i- in sum, is it your professional opinion that the proposed restaurant and drive-through lane will function in a safe and efficient manner?
Right.
And is it your understanding that my office filed a, uh, witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes, right.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, my next witness is Ms. Jennifer Mitchell. Jennifer, uh, please again state your name and address for the record?
Jennifer Mitchell, three thirty-three Pierce Road, Suite two hundred, Itasca, Illinois six zero one four three.
Again, you're a professional engineer specializing in traffic, transportation, and parking evaluations?
Yes.
And you've previously testified in that capacity as well, is that right?
Yes, I have.
The, uh, scope of your assignment in this case was to provide a professional opinion and design direction as to the safest options for the proposed drive-through lane, and specifically the points of ingress and egress to the property, is that right?
Yes.
And is it your professional opinion that, that the proposed site plan, specifically with the now-twenty-four-foot-wide driveway on Ridge, provides the safest and most efficient design for egress from the property?
Yes.
And is it also your opinion that the proposed reuse of, um, or the proposed use of a twenty-four-foot drive actually complies with the applicable, uh, C-dot standards?
Yes, I believe it does.
For those reasons, your professional opinion is, again, that the special use has been, has been designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort, correct?
Yes, I believe it has, specific to reducing the number of entering driveways, um, the signing of the entrance only and exit only, with do-not-enter signs in appropriate locations, and the exit sign is a right-turn only, which reduces the number of conflicts between pedestrians, excuse me, pedestrians and turning vehicles.
Great, um, and i- it is your understanding that your firm provided a written traffic assessment summarizing, uh, the findings and conclusions in this case?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that my office submitted a copy of the updated traffic analysis, uh, last week to the zoning board?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in that written report?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Uh, lastly, I have, uh, Mr. Terrence O'Brien. Um, Terry, please state your name, name and address for the record?
Uh, Terrence O'Brien, O-P-A-S-F-E-B-R-I-E-N. I maintain offices at one four five Revere Drive, Northbrook, Illinois, professional real estate appraiser, consultant. Before we begin, I would just like to make a couple of observations pertaining to my report. Subsequent to the preparation of the report, and now referring to page number two, where I described the proposed special use, the number of parking spaces has changed, and there I mentioned twenty-five, it is now down to twenty-one. And also, uh, subsequent to my prepared, this report, the curb cut on Howard Street will be limited to an ingress only, I had an ingress and egress. So I just want to make the record straight as far as the corrections to my report.
Thank you, Terry, um, and again, the scope of your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use, uh, would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
That is correct.
You physically inspected the subject property?
Yes, I inspected it back on, uh, January fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, and then, again, on this past week, July eleventh of twenty twenty-two.
And you, of course, again, prepared a written report summarizing your findings and conclusions, is that right?
That is correct.
Generally, though, Terry, is it your professional opinion that the proposed special use does, in fact, meet all of the approval criteria for special use?
In my opinion, it most definitely meets all the criteria. In fact, I've addressed these various criterias within the report itself that I submitted.
Terry, just because we do have, um, the city, uh, in a, an objection, I would like to very quickly work through the five standards. Um, again, it's your understanding that the revisions, uh, to the plan actually do meet code for a proposed restaurant with the drive-through lane, addressing standard number one, is that right?
Yes, well, most definitely, it does, yes.
And you believe it's in the interest of public convenience and would not have an adverse, significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community, is that right?
In my opinion, it would not, in fact, I find the proposed use to be harmonious and compatible with other land uses within the subject area, I would point out, within a mile and a half of the subject, I'm aware of at least fourteen other drive-through-type facilities. Some of these are located right along Howard Street in close proximity of the subject. I'd also point out that there are, um, the primary land use along Howard Street is business, retail, and commercial. And I believe that the proposed use is compatible with those uses.
And Terry, just, uh, on, on that point, the property we know has had a history of other retail use, supported by a, a drive-through, is that right?
Yes, it used to be a byline bank, and it had five drive-through windows located on the south side of the existing structure. They all exited out to Ridge, and uh, I understand the, the concern pertaining to maybe the conflict of the existing drive, the proposed drive-through, uh, traffic with the traffic that just parked and is, goes inside and use the restaurant. The same thing occurred, though, with the five windows for byline. Two of them would leave at the same time, and they would come together and converge, but there was never any problem. So again, I don't see where there'd be a problem here. Furthermore, once they exit, they're going to be going in the southbound direction on Ridge, they're not going to cross over into incoming traffic from the south, which is proceeding north on Ridge.
Thank you, Terry, now, with respect to the, um, compatibility with the surrounding area, um, site planning, building scale, and so forth, the proposed, uh, project contemplates an adaptive reuse of the existing building, right?
That is correct.
So it's a one-story building today, and it has, again, re- most recently used for retail purposes, and it'll remain a one-story building for retail purposes, correct?
That is correct, not only there, but I would point out immediately to the west, there is a six-story structure which is uh, currently being utilized for storage. Also, I would point out that located on the north side of, uh, Howard Street, a little bit to the west, in, within the corporate limits of Evanston, is a multi-story apartment building recently constructed. I'd also point out that the property located immediately east of, uh, the subject, east of Ridgeland, is, uh, zoned, uh, is, has a three-story structure, commercial retail structure on the ground floor. So, in terms of height and density, the proposed building does not exceed many of the existings, and many instances is far less intense.
And following on that, specific to standard number four, the character, the proposed special use is required to, is required to be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of other, uh, operating characteristics, outdoor lighting, noise, and traffic generation. Is it your opinion that based on those fourteen similar uses all within a mile and a half of the subject property, that this type of use is actually quite typical and common, specifically at this site?
At this site and within this location and surrounding area, most definitely.
Without being redundant, the property was a retail bank served by a five-lane drive-through. Our proposal is a restaurant that would be served by a single-lane drive-through, correct?
That is correct.
Great, and then with respect to pedestrian safety and comfort, is it your general opinion that the reduced driveway access on West Howard, as well as the additional signage, pedestrian striping onsite, and the reduced driveway of egress back onto, to Ridge Avenue are all improvements, um, to the existing conditions addressing pedestrian safety and comfort?
They are definitely improvements to the existing conditions, and in my opinion, the proposed use as designed is harmonious and compatible. I don't see any substantial problem with in- interaction of pedestrians with vehicles leaving the subject site.
And it's certainly more contained and controlled than the existing conditions which suggest, is that right?
Most definitely, yes.
Thank you, Terry. Um, Mr. Chairman, that does conclude the applicant's case in chief. Um, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about the proposal, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Counselor. Um, any questions from the board before we move it over to the objector side? Okay, I guess one question I have is, is just as we, you know, talk and think about traffic, um, if the traffic experts here could give their, um, opinion on the difference between um, traffic that the, the historic use of a bank five-lane drive-through would have compared to a single-lane restaurant? Uh, my assumption is that a restaurant would be still much heavier traffic than a bank, even despite the number of lanes, but I'd like to get the traffic expert's view.
This is Jennifer Mitchell with BLA, the traffic engineering firm.
Great, thanks, and Jennifer, just because I don't think we've, um, we've met before, could you just give an overview on, um, uh, what leads you to be in, being an expert in this space?
I'm not sure I understand your question, I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you.
Uh, sorry about that, so, um, when we acknowledge people as experts, or the term expert, usually we have either a history of them, or, um, just some more background, so I'm wondering where you answer my, um, substantive question, if you can give the board an overview of what makes you an expert in this space, be it any certifications, um, numbers of, of reports you've done, um, education, things like that?
Certainly. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Illinois, Wisconsin, Indiana, and Michigan. I have my, uh, certification in professional traffic operations through the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I've received my Bachelor of Civil Engineering degree at Muckett University, and I've been in this industry for over thirty years. I have not only worked for the state of the state of Illinois Department of Transportation, but I've worked for a county, a municipality, as well as, um, private sector doing land development and public highways. So I feel I'm well-versed in geometric design as it relates to highways, as well as access needs and site circulation for private development.
Great, thank you, and I, I would agree, uh, so, with that, um, I, yeah, let me know if you need me to repeat the substantive question, or else you can go right ahead.
I apologize, this is the court quarter, I'm so sorry. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you could just have people mute that aren't speaking, there's a little background going on?
Okay, yep, so if you're not speaking, if you could mute, that would be helpful.
Okay, so you had a question of regarding the number of trips that would be generated and how that would affect or not affect drive-through, um?
Yeah, so, more specifically, the question is just because we're referring to the uh, the historic use of a five-lane bank drive-through quite a bit, and my assumption is still that a single-lane restaurant is going to get much more use than a bank drive-through, no matter the number of lanes that the bank used, but I just wanted to, um, get your take on that.
Yeah, so, the site itself, as a restaurant, will generate more traffic than a Yes, so the site itself as a restaurant will generate more traffic than a bank would. But the difference in traffic is approximately one vehicle per minute, more than what a bank would generate. As it relates to the drive-through, fifty percent of the vehicles would use the drive-through for the restaurant, whereas for a for a bank, there is significantly more and that's the reason why they would have five drive-through windows and why a restaurant only has one. So we do not anticipate a greater drive-through use than a bank would, and so that's why a single drive-through lane would be sufficient.
Yeah, that's super helpful. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions from the board at this point? Okay, so let's move over to the objector side of things and I'm going to ask that we start with with DPD, so Nancy Radzovich, just, you know, we've we've read the recommendation of denial, but if there's any any summary that's somewhat focused to what the applicant has said at this point in time, just so we get the denial recommendation on record from from you all, and then I'm going to ask for CDOT to speak as well.
Of course. Yeah, I I just wanted to reiterate just a couple of points again that were mentioned, I think, in our departmental recommendation. Again, the the biggest concerns from us is not this use per se at the site, it's the way it's designed. And I think our recommendation was very specific as to the issues that we see with this design and that it does not meet several of the special use criteria because of that. This dual-lane exit, having a drive-through and a parking lot exit side by side, allowing cars to exit side by side, is a big issue. It is not something at all that DPD nor CDOT encourage. We we want the traffic to be merged and brought down. Typically, we'll see a one-way exit row exit driveway at about sixteen feet. And what that does is two things. It controls and limits the number of vehicles that can exit. It also eliminates that possibility when you've got a twenty-four-foot-wide exit driveway, regardless of the pavement markings and any sort of signage. People on the left side might think they can turn left, people on the right side might turn right, or they both both might try to turn right, or the person on the right side might try and turn left and vice versa. So there's just too many vehicular conflicts so close to where the drive-through exit is and so close to this pedestrian pathway. And there is quite a bit of residential in this neighborhood. This is right where the Howard Street bus pickup is to to Howard Street. So, you know, those are very big concerns. The other concern that we've raised is that interior one-way north-south drive aisle. A typical drive aisle, again, is is about sixteen feet wide. In fact, a two-way drive aisle for ninety-degree parking is only about twenty to twenty-two feet wide. So this even exceeds what what our standards are. The wider you get for drive aisles, the higher speeds that can happen. And particularly with this type of configuration, you can have multiple cars driving side by side and then you're forcing pedestrians. A pavement marking is not going to provide safety for pedestrians having these dual kind of lanes going through side by side. So, you know, we've, these are comments that we actually staff have provided to the applicant in the past. And we believe that, again, it's not the use. What the issue is here is that as designed, it is just not safe and doesn't meet the criteria.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, I too want to go to, well, actually first, does the board have any questions for Nancy and DPD?
Yeah, I've I've got a question. Is it? Is it DPD's position that the five lanes for the bank was was okay, but this one lane for the drive for the restaurant drive-through is not okay? And if so, how how do you make the distinction? What's the difference between the two uses and why, you know, why is the bank okay, but the the drive-through restaurant not okay?
Okay. With all due respect, please keep in mind with special uses, every special use is evaluated on a case-by-case basis and based on the project at hand. So it is is not appropriate to be comparing this to other uses. That being said, any sort of bank use that might have existed on the site, you know, who knows how long ago it was designed, what sort of traffic volumes they had at that time, maybe it was designed before you had digital banking, right? So back in the day when when people actually had to go to the bank, you don't know what the the context of the neighborhood was at that time, so it is completely on, I don't want to say unfair, but but it's just not apples to apples. It doesn't affect this application at all. Specifically, what we are charged with and what the board is charged with is evaluating this special use, which is why it's a special use for a drive-through at this particular location, based on how it's designed. And that's laid out in the special use criteria, the design, safety, all of those things. And those are the things that we have issues with with this particular sign for this design for this particular use at this particular location. Driveway width was reduced, if they would reduce that interior drive aisle to provide safe safe passage and and reduce the speeds and control the traffic onsite and give the pedestrians safe routes and cars safe routes. We would be okay with this this use on the site. It really just comes down to the safety aspects associated with some of these portions of the design.
And on that point, as far as the the width of the exit, is it? Is it DPD's position that while the applicant is calling it a a a single exit lane, it's actually wide enough for two vehicles? Is that is that what DPD is saying?
I I, you know, I was taking notes and and I don't want to at all, and want to qualify this, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I thought I heard the applicant say that this width was specifically designed so they can have the cars come straight out and not have to merge because they were concerned about that. That is our biggest concern on the other end, is you do not want dual cars side by side, especially drive-throughs are quick, right? They want to get cars through there. You're going to have cars picking up their food, trying to get out of there as quickly as they can because that's the whole reason they went to the drive-through. We don't want those two cars side by side. That is why we and CDOT repeatedly on these projects always want at the curb cut at the at the property line where the the driveway meets the the street and, most importantly, the public sidewalk, have one-way driveways merged down so that there's only one lane of travel, so it's safer for the vehicles and safer for the pedestrians.
And and am I correct that under the the current plan that the applicant has, two cars could actually be side by side trying to make a right turn onto North Ridge Avenue?
Absolutely, absolutely. Twenty-four feet is a typical width for a two-way driveway. So in and out and and again accommodates cars side by side.
Thank you.
Of course.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Nancy and DPD? Okay, let's, because we've got CDOT on, let's go to Charles Raisner. So Charles, if you could state your your name and your role and I'll get you sworn in.
Good morning to the chair and the board and everyone on the meeting. My name is Charles Raisner. That's R O E S N E R. I'm a city planner with the Chicago Department of Transportation.
Great, thanks, Charles. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, thanks. Okay, if you could give us CDOT's take on this recommendation of denial, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. This type of a reuse is going to create a lot of design challenges and hopefully I can flag just a couple of them for the board. But first, I wanted to take a look at that driveway onto Ridge and essentially just concur with everything that the Department of Planning has already said. That driveway is way too wide at twenty-four and it will effectively function as two lanes. We'll probably also encourage people to drive inbound, so that needs to be probably sixteen feet. I think that two cars turning out onto southbound Ridge at the same time is a definite possibility with the width that we see on the site plan right now. And we know that those vehicles that will be going back to Howard Street are probably going to use birchwood and hoin through the adjacent residential neighborhood to the east to get back up to Howard Street. So I think it makes a lot of sense to slow the flow of traffic out of that site and onto Ridge Avenue by reducing the width of that driveway down to sixteen feet and ensuring that traffic is going to be turning right out of it only. The other couple of design challenges that I just wanted to flag for everyone is into the site, westbound traffic on Howard Street, making a left across that turn bay is rather dangerous. So I think that we should probably consider turn restrictions, signage on private property facing north, discouraging westbound Howard Street, making that southbound left turn into the site. I think if we take a look at redesigning the site just a little bit, one thing that we should also keep in mind is that if there is a car sitting at the order board and then another car pulls in behind it and swings wide, there's the possibility that the whole entire parking lot could get blocked by just those two vehicles. So we need to keep that in mind for a redesign. And then also, one thing that we noticed is that if there are large orders, the customers are going to be directed to pull into a parking space. This comes from the traffic memo. But it doesn't appear that there's any direct route for someone to go from the window to a parking space onsite. So it seems like they're going to have to leave Hit Ridge Avenue and come all the way back around onto the site again. We we also did notice when we were taking a look at the truck turning simulations, which are called auto turn, we noticed that fire trucks will be impeded in their path through the site when they come in from Howard and then go toward Ridge, if any vehicles at all are parked in those southernmost parking spaces. I think those are parking spaces eleven through seventeen. So any parked cars that are going to conflict with fire trucks and garbage trucks also. But those are the the main design challenges that we saw. And clearly, the thing that stands out the most is the the super-wide drive aisle and especially the width of the driveway exiting onto Ridge.
Great, thank you so much for that, Charles. And do we have any questions from the board for Charles Raisner, CDOT? Okay, and just to confirm, before we go back to the applicant, are there any other people on to object on this matter? If you are, just raise your hand, please. Okay, so let's go back to the applicant, keeping with the order of process. Counselor, again, this is your time for rebuttal and and a closing statement.
Thank you, Chair. Do I get an opportunity to cross-examine the city's witnesses?
You can do that as a part of rebuttal. Yep.
Thank you. Well, maybe it may be more effective to to recall our witness and rebuttal. There were a few points that I wanted to make initially. First off, the size of the north-south drive aisle on on the site to the west of the property is a function of the odd shape of the existing property, along with the location of the building on the property. And I think that's pretty clear in the site plan that's being presented or shown on the the monitor right now. Our our property widens, we've incorporated landscaping elements around the perimeter. The added width is an existing condition. It's maybe even more pronounced because we have reduced the entrance driveway width on the Howard Street side of the property. Now, Mr. Raisner raised an issue about parking or about the fire truck and emergency vehicle access. We completely agree that that's a significant concern. But what we're attempting to accomplish is we have what's considered a CDOT-approved point of ingress and egress off of Howard Street. And then to DPD's point, a wider drive aisle, which you would assume would benefit the traffic circulation onsite, and then they'd be able to exit through that same slightly larger exit driveway back on to Ridge. So the issue of fire truck ingress and egress is something that we've actually or emergency vehicle, I should say, emergency vehicle access is something that we've considered. And another reason that would actually support our proposed design versus narrowing the drives and forcing traffic to merge, God forbid there was an emergency, we now have a fire truck stuck behind customer traffic leaving the property through the the drive-through lane and customer traffic leaving through the regular drive aisle. So again, we would actually call this a benefit of our program to allow that fluidity in the event of emergency. I'd also point out that at no point during the city's testimony did any type of history of accidents or pedestrian conflicts arise or occur. There's nothing else to rely on except for speculation. And our whole position is that by reducing the driveway on Ridge and by reducing the driveway on Howard and by adding the appropriate signage and by adding the appropriate pedestrian details that do not exist in the property today will only be improving the pedestrian safety and comfort around surrounding the property. I would take somewhat of an issue with the comment that it's not appropriate to compare uses. With all due respect to the board and to the department, that's what we do every Friday, every third Friday of every month. It's our job to show that what we're doing is consistent, compatible, is comparable with what's around us. That's the the foundation of what we do in front of the board, both on variations and on special uses. So I think that that clearly skirts the issue that there possibly to Commissioner's point, how how is it okay for a retail bank to operate with five lanes when an even tighter, more secure plan is being proposed for a restaurant and a reduction down to a single lane? Logically, that doesn't compute. And if I can, if I could recall our traffic consultant, Jennifer, I just wanted to have her or provide her with an opportunity to respond to some of the points that were raised during the city's objection.
So this is Jennifer Mitchell with BLA Traffic Engineer. I want to address the thirty-one-foot-wide drive aisle first in that we're trying to show that there would be a drive aisle and an area which would lead to the drive-through. So if you narrow that thirty-one-foot drive aisle to twenty feet, you would be blocking through traffic and or you would be blocking the drive-through. There would not be any mobility on that that side of the building. And so that is part of the reason and that can be seen through the turning templates that the person approaching the drive-through would, you know, not be able to prohibit those that are coming in to park and go around the side of the building. I also wanted to say that I know you're concerned about speed, but this site lot is not exactly very deep coming in off of Howard, so I don't know how the desire to speed up would occur. So it's a very short distance and the speed is not major concern based on the tightness of this site. As far as the exiting driveway at twenty-four feet, you know, a length of a car is approximately twenty-five feet. And that is the length of the, from the sidewalk to the end of the drive-through. And so a car will be sitting there to exit and that drive-through vehicle may inch forward. However, Ridge Avenue is a single- However, Ridge Avenue is a single lane. People are not going to be driving side by side to get onto a single lane roadway. And so while there might be a vehicle side by side, that's the point in which they need to merge. The site is not long enough to provide a longer merge area. And so in order to keep mobility on the site between through traffic, exiting vehicles that were parked and the drive-through, that space is needed for them to merge and then cross the sidewalk and enter Ridge Avenue. So there might be a slight overlapping side by side, but there really isn't going to be two vehicles exiting at the same time because everybody who drives on this road knows that Ridge Avenue is a single lane. And this exit, even if you wanted to reduce it, I really wouldn't recommend anything less than eighteen feet. That is our general design as it relates to, in the case of a disabled vehicle being, you know, stuck in that driveway, that would take up eight feet and that would allow ten feet, which is the narrowest allowable width for driving and the travel lane to allow a vehicle to still get around a disabled vehicle. So I mean, I understand you're sixteen, but that's extremely narrow and one fire truck wouldn't even be able to get out of that. So I would request that the you know, that be modified. I guess my other question would be is if the pavement markings were to show and direct vehicles how they were to exit in a narrower space. That would allow for, you know, your emergency vehicles to enter and exit as needed. And we could add more pavement markings in the, in the parking lot to clarify the use and the location of vehicles where they should be driving for the drive-through versus parking spaces and, and the same for the exiting. We can paint the pavement there to narrow up that exiting area. But I would, I would suggest keeping the driveway at its width to allow those larger vehicles that need to exit.
Chairman, if, if I may, with that, if I may briefly conclude, and then we could, we can move on.
Yeah, before you can
Questions.
Yeah. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. Mr. Raisner raised an issue about what happens when there's, you know, too large of an order and someone actually has to park in one of the spots to wait for their order to be done. He had said that, you know, under the plans as is, they would actually have to exit out onto Ridge and go around the block and, and come back into park. Is that, is that accurate? Based on the plans?
Yeah, unfortunately, and I think that actually speaks to why the driveway width on Ridge is so critical. We simply don't have enough turn, turning room to take traffic from the drive-through it back into the lot without having to exit the property. So that's something that I think, you know, I, I don't anticipate that happening on a regular basis. We have as part of our program, as we explained during the applicant's case in chief, we have dedicated pickup employees as well as delivery spots on site. So a larger order, that's something that I think in, in regular practice, we'd be able to handle and control so that it isn't forcing somebody to leave the site to then have to loop around and come back, back to the property. But I think that speaks to, again, exactly why, or why such an issue is being made over the egress back onto Ridge.
And then Nick, could you just briefly, when you, when you started your rebuttal, you were talking about the emergency vehicles and the access issues there. Could you just briefly explain that again? I, I wasn't quite understanding. And then with the, with the thought in my mind that I, I would like, if the chairman will allow, I'd like Mr. Raisner to respond to this, this argument, just so I can kind of get both sides of it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I think Jennifer's testimony probably did a little bit better job than I did. What we're trying to accomplish, first off, we have an existing condition that provides a larger than typical drive aisle on site. That's bef, that's the area to the west of the property before you get into the drive-through. What it allows us to do, because we have that kind of unique lot shape and that extra space to work with, it allows the drive, the drive-through traffic to basically organize itself on the west side of the lane and allow traffic that's either going into parking on the west side of the lot or on the south side of the lot to basically use, we'll call it the, the western half of, of the drive aisle. So it allows for a functionality on site that opens up the possibility, again, in the event of an emergency, in the event that an ambulance or a fire truck needs to get to the site, they're not being blocked by a, a minimal lane of traffic that's focused all of that traffic to the drive-through. Our plan, again, we think that it's a safe solution by having that additional space, a fire truck or emergency vehicle can access the property. It's not going to get tied into the drive-through traffic lane and it has the ability to circulate south of that and then exit the property back on to Ridge. So, and Jennifer, without being redundant, did I summarize that hopefully a little bit better this time?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank, thank you for that. And then
I'm sorry, Chairman, did that answer?
Well, it, it, you completely answered what I was asking. And what I wanted to ask the chairman is if, if he can allow Mr. Raisner to just respond to that, because I just want to hear both sides of it.
Yeah, Commissioner, that's, that's definitely fine. So Mr. Raisner can go ahead and interest us as well. That would be helpful.
Sure. So I mean, I think that it's just a note that the place that the truck would get held up is on the south side of the site there with those motor vehicles that you can see parked facing sort of southeastbound. Clearly, the truck would be able to get into the site from Howard Street and respond to anything that's going on on site. That's not an issue. I also have a little bit less of a concern with any truck, fire truck or garbage truck being stuck behind the cars that are in the drive-through. I mean, if it's a fire truck and it can turn on its lights and sirens, anybody in the drive-through can clear out pretty quickly. And of course, a fire truck would probably roll over the curb on the driveway on Ridge Avenue if it had to. The only problem there is that if, if a car is parked in, in that spot on the south, the garbage truck or the fire truck can't move past it without someone coming out and moving the vehicle. But acknowledge that there isn't an issue with the truck entering the site from Howard Street. No problem there.
Commissioner, do you have any follow-ups on that?
I do not. I, I don't, but I
Nancy has her hand raised as well. So Nancy, so long as it directly relates to that, let's get you on and then we're, we're gonna move to closing.
Right. And, and I just wanted to reiterate again, because the zoning bureau is the, the bureau and the department, DPD, is charged with the parking and interior site layouts. I just want to reiterate that our parking standards are set up for safety. And parking standards for ninety-degree parking, if this was a two-way travel lane, would, would require either a twenty or a twenty-two foot wide drive aisle. And, and that's it. So, you know, this, this argument that, that, that's thirty-one feet is needed to accommodate anything else is beyond the standards already established by the City of Chicago and the zoning bureau. Even for two-way travel. Thank you.
Okay, before we go to Nick's closing, any other general questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, go right ahead and, and close this out.
Chairman, I appreciate it. Again, in every one of these cases, our burden is to show that each of the five criteria for special use have been met. Through our witness testimony, Mr. O'Brien, our professional architect, as well as through our professional traffic engineer, all of these standards have been met. We appreciate that there are certain constraints and limitations and unique characteristics of the subject property. But we believe that the plan being presented not only meets all code criteria, but is able to, to support or meet all of the special use criteria specific to the drive-through. I would also point out, and I appreciate that the board has the authority to impose conditions on any type of approval. And if we're fortunate enough to receive the board's approval, one of the concessions or one of the conditions that we would be agreeable to is reducing the driveway width per Mr. or per Jessica's suggestion to eighteen feet. If that is a concession or a condition that the zoning board is comfortable imposing, it's a condition that we can live with. Again, that was the testimony presented. We can't, we don't believe we can go lower than that eighteen-foot dimension. But in the interest of compromise, I do want to offer that as potential, a, a potential solution specific to the egress back onto Ridge. And with that, Chairman, I, I really do appreciate your time on this one and, and thank you very much.
Okay, real quick, Nick, only because the, of the openness you just stated related to the, the opening length. I do want to get DPD's take on that since we have precise number being used in the plans and in the the recommendation of denial. So I want to go really quick to Nancy Radzovich to see if, what, what, if anything that sure us from DPD's point of view.
I'm sorry, could, could you restate that again? Could Nick restate?
Oh, sure.
So in the, and again, in the interest of compromise, reducing the twenty-four foot wide driveway on Ridge down to eighteen feet, one-eighth. Again, just to help alleviate the concern about two parallel cars, but again, still giving us the maneuverability so that cars exiting the drive-through and the typical or customer drive aisle have, have that maneuverability.
From DPD's standpoint, and I actually had conferred with Charles Raisner before this, both DPD and CDOT would can, would support an eighteen-foot wide exit drive. Their concern remains, though, is there's an excessively wide interior drive aisle that is beyond what we see as standard width for even two-way travel. Even if you had a, a one-way drive, you know, keep the, the one-way drive-through lane and have a parallel other lane, thirty-one feet exceeds what you need for two lanes of travel. Anything excessive like that just becomes so much more potential for conflicts. So we still remain very concerned with that onsite circulation and potential for conflicts.
Okay, Nick, do you have anything else? That's it? Okay, you're, you're sound faded, but I think I hear
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, we can. Okay, so let's take this under consideration. We've got a lot of information here. I'm going to move, just because it's been a minute since the board had a break, I'm going to move to our thirty-minute break now. There's some things after this in the agenda that I think we'll be able to get through very quickly. And I'm going to lead it in such a way to do so. But with that, I'm calling a thirty-minute recess. This brings us to twelve-thirty-five. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes to everyone at twelve-thirty-five. Thanks.